Uh, hello. Pam, no. We're going to go ahead and officially call the meeting to order. Kathy, please let the record show that all board members are in attendance. And if you'd like to join me in signing the pledge to the flag. Right behind Jill. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God. And to this world where we are. At this time, our next agenda item is to approve the agenda as presented. The recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Would somebody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Jill, is there a second?
Second.
Charles with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we can now vote. Kathy, will you take Sharita's vote? Call her.
This is Bruce.
He's working on it, yes.
My money's on him.
Here it comes back then. Hi, Kathy, did it, I didn't get it popped up. Okay, I'm gonna try to log back in. Her laptops are like, we thought you were here just once a month. Yes, I did. I logged back in. Good news is, the motion passed. We'll. Just a moment. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to public comment. And I'm gonna read our remarks. The Board of Education welcomes comments from the audience about issues being discussed. It is recommended that requests to speak to the board be submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker and will be timed by the board secretary. It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meetings. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the school or in the district office. The board uses this time in our meeting to listen to comments and/or concerns from the public, but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. If you have materials that you want to share, please provide them to the board secretary prior to speaking, and she will distribute them to the board members. Kathy, at this time, do we have any new public comments to address agenda items? Okay, all right, thank you. Our next agenda item is information report from the Springfield Council Annual Update, which we don't believe we see our speaker here with that. We will move forward with our next agenda item, and should she show up, we will integrate that back into our meeting. Our next agenda item is preliminary contracts, agreements, and change orders. And that brings Carol to the podium. Good evening, Carol.
Good evening. So, we have posted for you our listings of all the contracts, agreements, and bids. And you may notice that there are some extra descriptor lines. We've been able to add that to the reports that are provided to you to provide additional context. As is our practice, you have the next couple of weeks until our September 22 board meeting to review these. If you have any questions, reach out to me. If you have questions this evening, I would be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Carol at this time? Done a couple of weeks to look over those. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is Agenda Item 5.0, which is Board Policy. We have two different sets here of Board Policy. 5.01, and I believe, Dr. Gentman, you wanna set that up for us?
Sure. 5.01, as we know, this is a study session. These are MSBA recommendations or things that have come through. I think all of these are MSBA things that have come through over the last few months in response to either law changes or case law that made a play out in the last six months. This is our last set, I think, of MSBA on this run, and we'll let you know if anything else comes through. But this is first read, so no action requested tonight. Let us know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, our next agenda item is 5.02. The Revision of Board of Education Policy, GBBDAE. Dr. Gentman, you wanna set that up for us?
Sure. Last meeting, we did pass this policy, and this is a limited time. It runs through December, but it's really in response to the COVID issues and expanding our leave options for our staff during that time. That was passed, and then at that meeting, Charles made the request to give us updated language that would expand that to multiple events. So we ran that to MSBA to ask for their feedback, ask for the language that would meet that. So this is language that would expand the quarantine leave to multiple events. We have currently in policy, we had made a recommendation for 10 days or one event, basically. So, that's what you have before you.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, we obviously, as board members, have questions and want to have a discussion about this, so I will go ahead and read the recommended action, see if somebody wants to make the motion, and if there is a second, and then open it up for discussion among the board. So the recommended action is that the Board adopt Board of Education Policy, GBBDAE, Family and Medical Leave Expansion Emergency Paid Sick Leave COVID-19 as presented. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I shall make the motion.
Thank you, Jill. Is there a second? Charles, thank you. Okay, at this time, it is time for discussion. So, we didn't get to discuss this topic last time, so this is a good time to do that and see what questions you have for John, Carol, or Penny at this time.
That's okay.
Anybody want to start with any questions? Charles?
I mean, my rationale for bringing, for asking for it, and I appreciate it, coming forward at this meeting, is that it may be entirely unlikely that someone would be asked slash required to quarantine, but should that circumstance happen, it seems to me that ought to be the responsibility of the district, assuming that that person does everything that the issue is supposed to have done, as is the policy that we passed last week, right? That those stipulations are in place. I think it's really important that we, I think, make this commitment to the folks that are doing such a superb job, in my judgment, sort of leading in the teaching, learning. I think it's important for us to demonstrate that.
Okay, and I don't know if everybody has reviewed the, I'm sure you have, but just to remind us, the highlighted, the yellow highlighted words are the only words we're discussing tonight as part of this revision. So, you wanna make sure, I know we don't have it as a presenter on the screen, so if you wanna make sure that you pull it up so that we all know what we are discussing. And then, I think, I would just probably start with, I don't know who to direct my question to exactly, but just, you know, what is, what is state and Missouri public school systems, you know, what is being asked of them as far as what's required? What are other school districts doing, and what are you hearing on that end?
So, MSBA's recommendation didn't have quarantine leave in it to begin with, right? Theirs is just whatever the federal policy. The quarantine leave was something that this administration recommended because we believe we're putting our full staff, teachers, support team members in positions where they potentially could have a quarantine event that's caused by the school district or by the work. So we wanted to make sure that they weren't damaged in their leave, and that's why we moved forward with this. So, they didn't have a problem with the leave, but it's just not something that they had recommended at that point. I know some questions did come in just regarding what are other people doing and other school districts, I don't know, I mean, it's a wide variety of leaves and whether or not they have quarantine or not. We did check with some local organizations, higher ed and large businesses, MSU, Drury, VASPRO, BKD, City of Springfield. None of them have offered this quarantine leave component, right? So this is something that-
Say that list again.
MSU, Drury, VASPRO, BKD, or City of Springfield.
They haven't offered any quarantine leave?
Our conversation with them is that they've had flexibility in HR policies in order to deal with events, but-
That would be my comment, is that, so is there an alternative for people who are quarantined for their job descriptions? Because that's what the other universities would do, is offering an alternative to teach-
And that's what we're doing as the first response, right? So anybody that might come in in a quarantine event, we offer them remote work if they have it, right? So if a teacher needs to go home because of a quarantine event that happened at the school, we will ask them to do remote work because we need them to do remote work, we want them to stay connected. Even if their kids are still in the classroom, we'll have a sub in the classroom and still have the teacher connecting. So, really, the quarantine leave is most likely to happen in the operational side of the world where there isn't remote work available. Most of our educators, we're trying to keep them tied to our students at all cost. So, so that's the first thing we do, is there remote work available so that you don't have to access quarantine leave. So, we do believe this is a limited number of employees that will actually receive it. So, but those employers are, they're working on different flex ways to deal with situations. Cox, we did check with hospital associate, and heard back from Cox, they do have a leave for if someone gets it, right? Where there's a 10-day, you know, opportunity for it, if they get it because of a work-related issue, then they will have another 10 days. So it's similar to quarantine leave, a little different because it's actually, I think, a diagnosis, not just a quarantine, but it's functioned similarly. In that scenario, they've said they haven't had to look at multiple events because it's a get-it, not a quarantine, right? So there might not be multiple events because it's unlikely, I think, in this time that people have gotten it multiple times. So, it's a little bit of a mixed bag across the community on how people are responding.
Is the question or concern about the multiple opportunities, or is it about the leave in and of itself? Is that the concern, the multiple opportunity for them to go on leave, or is it the?
Yeah, I support the opportunity. I don't support the multiple opportunities because it's, one, it goes against the advice we've gotten from council, and, two, it's unlimited, and I'm not comfortable with that. But giving it at all, I am comfortable with. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think everybody voted for the leave last time, so I don't think that's a-
It's the multiple leave aspect that is problematic.
For me, yes.
And we're talking about the difference, there's, in this policy, there's different types of leave that we approved, or unanimously approved last time. Tonight, we're just talking about quarantine leave. I'm just trying to clarify-
That's the only change.
Each event that could be-
Correct.
All of those are already adopted policy. The only modification would be the per work-related event.
Which could be multiple.
Correct.
You got it?
That's correct. Yeah.
To me, that's the most likely to occur. If you're in place and close by, that you would have to be quarantined. That's the most likely to occur with multiple people, based on our things that we've gotten so far too. So, I can see it happening more than once, based on where you are, and I don't, of all the stuff we have now put on people's plates that are out there every day with kids, I don't want them concerned at all that if they're quarantined because of their job, that they should have to worry about money at all. I just, when I saw the other day a teacher saying, "I just took instruction time to talk about the safe way to wear masks," and we all go back to the corner for an intruder drill, that just made me sick, absolutely sick. And then, they're teaching and supposed to be teaching a subject, and we're talking about wearing masks, and now we've got an intruder drill, and you gotta make sure you're masked. I don't want them worrying about the fact that it'll be very few people, if any. So, I'm not worried about the money. I'm not worried about the fact, I just want to take, if there's any concern, I want it off their plate. I want it off their plate, that they would not have to worry about this. And we're gonna look at it again in December.
Correct. Yeah, this, this policy turns out in December.
Like it's a forever deal, and I honestly, and I don't mean this, I really don't care what others are doing. Me, it's the right thing to do. Since we ask them, it's your job, this is, you know, we're giving you options, but those of you that chose to go teach face-to-face really don't have to be concerned about this part. It's, you know, it's not, I just, I don't see an issue with that for four months.
And I think I would have to, it strikes me, it feels to me like the right thing to do. And Jill mentioned the advice from council. I mean, I know there was sort of a caveat in there that this may sound harsh. I didn't, honestly, I didn't find it harsh, I just didn't find it compelling. I think the questions raised were, as it was put, public purpose, what is the public purpose? What is, how does education be improved by this? And that there is a demonstrated need. If we're gonna invoke that three-part test, that speaks to every single benefit we have. And I'm pretty sure we don't want to open that hand organ, in fact, well, I won't even go that far. We do not want to open that box, right? So I did, I'm not an attorney, clearly, but from my old debate days, that's what I would call a non-unique disadvantage, right? It relates to everything. So I don't think it speaks specifically to this extension. And, you know, my, my perception is that it's perhaps unlikely to be used, but I'd much rather have a policy that gives us the flexibility to do that, rather than have to find an exception, right? Or a loophole, or something like that. And, you know, and Jen, you made reference, and it was a powerful statement to me, that we're gonna go to war, we'd be happy to go into war or into battle with folks. We don't limit people when they go into battle to one visit to a mass unit, right? And I know that overextends the metaphor a little bit, but I think it's a powerful, it's a powerful method.
Do we have any other questions? Or, I've got a couple put up. Denise?
Other questions? So, John, I hope this doesn't hurry up, but how, this time, and I'm kinda looking at this as a needs assessment, and of course, that's really tough to do because this is the first time I've ever been through anything like this, but this time, since we have the policy in place, we put this in place two weeks ago, for the 10-day quarantine leave policy. What number of, or percent, you can put whatever, whatever you're most comfortable with, how many SPS employees are currently utilizing the newly approved COVID quarantine leave policy that we put in place two weeks ago?
Penny pulled that, because I thought that might be a question today, is we have five. We have four, a pair of professionals and one teacher that are on a quarantine leave offense, right? So, others are on quarantine, but they're been assigned remote work, right? So there is another additional population that have had a quarantine event, but they are in remote work assignments. But five are taking the actual leave that you approved.
That's very low percent. All right. So that, I'm just wondering, what, if you're looking at this as a needs assessment at this time, what are we looking at?
Just your hand here.
Yeah, question. For some reason, I was thinking that the quarantine leave was part of the Corona Response Act. So, what you're saying is, we're going over and above the Corona Response Act, over and above, even with what we already approved.
Correct.
Okay. For some reason, I thought there was, there was some, something in the legislation about if they met those criteria, certain criteria, you did that. If they didn't, we're, no.
Okay. No, a couple of reasons, quarantine leave and advanced sick leave, all of those are individual district recommendations of beyond what the, what the FMLA and the requirements at federal level are.
This strictly came out of administrative-
Recommendation.
Recommendation to do that.
That is-
I misunderstood that. I thought that was part of the Corona Act because I thought we had to deal with it, that our business, because we had quarantined people too, and the question came up, can you work at home or not?
And deal with some of that through FMLA and other things, but this is specific that we recommended due to the nature of our business.
And it could be because you fall under FMLA, we don't. So that's, that may be the difference, so, okay. I do have a problem with unlimited number, based on what Jill said. I, I understand the situation may occur, but we got three months now to think about it and, and see from data. But, I'm not comfortable with unlimited things that it could be. And I don't disagree with Bruce that it, the risk is there. There's always gonna be a risk, but I don't know that I'm ready to just do an opening policy.
I'll just share my thoughts. I think we've heard from everybody at this point. I think, I am, I'm uncomfortable with revising a policy that we just unanimously approved two weeks ago, and there, and us not having enough time to see what the demand is for the revision of such policy. And that's maybe just a precedent on how I think about policies more than any particular topic right now. And then, I also feel uncomfortable going against what MSBA and our legal counsel, maybe not going against, but what they are advising us. Can't tell us what to do, but what they're advising us. And I believe that I do trust Penny, and I do trust Carol to keep close tabs on what the needs. I know, I hear that they're working to find, you know, alternative creative working environments because we still have kids that need us. And so I know they're working hard to find those ways to keep them engaged. So I would expect that should a need change, even before December, even before the end of the policy, that they can bring us back a recommended action, whatever that looks like at the time, based on the needs of our staff. And we have the ability to turn on a dime with a special meeting. Done that in the last six months, very quickly, through Zoom and doing that. So that's, those are just my thoughts, and maybe a little different from anybody sitting here, but I think it's important for all of us to hear from each other tonight. Any other questions or comments?
Just a point of clarification, who at MSBA recommended this?
No one.
Then, you just said our attorney and MSBA.
No. You, you asked the question, I'll answer.
At MSBA.
Yeah, so we had MSBA review the current policy, and they said it was fine, right? We asked them for feedback and that we had sent back regarding the expansion, and they gave that language that Charles talked about on all benefits, just for clarity, right? That's the information we've received from attorneys, right?
They didn't recommend we put the quarantine leave in there.
Nope.
That did not come from MSBA.
No.
They did not-
No, that was administrative recommendation.
Strictly administrative.
Space didn't recommend it, it wasn't.
MSBA didn't recommend putting quarantine leave in there.
Right.
They didn't?
No.
They didn't recommend the cancer leave either?
No, I mean, the language is what we had sent out, and it said around the making sure every benefit has a, Charles was quoting it pretty well, intended purpose and those things. It said definitely the board can approve, right? This expanded leave.
We could do it. I just, I don't know, I'm not gonna speak for attorneys because that's not, I shouldn't speak for attorneys, should I? But I don't think their, MSBA was not, I think they would have put it in if they thought that was something that should have been included in there.
Maybe.
Any other questions or comments?
My only anxiety about, and you're right, we have demonstrated capacity to turn on a dime. In this instance, I'm not sure if I would want, why we would hold out the need to do that. I'd much rather have policy in place that would cover even the unlikely event, that someone would be forced by the nature of their job assignment to, to have that in place and not use it, rather than now we need it and then we have to, yeah. I think there's both pragmatic as well as symbolic.
I'm gonna see if I see any other questions or comments before we move forward. I see none, so I will, we can close our discussion time, and so, hearing no other discussion, then we are prepared to vote.
I'm sorry that I get a little confused as we go through this. If, if I wish to keep things as they are, to leave it with what we've done so far, it's a no vote tonight.
That is correct. Yes.
So that a yes vote is to change-
To update the policy.
Correct.
Update, to, the yes vote is to update the policy with that highlighted yellow wording.
I'm still a little confused, because the highlighted yellow wording is the, is the part that I saw here is the part that says per event.
Right. So it expands it from 10 to 10 per event, right? So a yes vote-
So it's unlimited.
Expands it to 10 per event. The current is 10 cap.
A question. Any other questions before we, before we vote? Okay, motion fails. Moving forward, new business. Agenda Item 6.01, Local Compliance Plan for Special Education. I believe we have our Director of Special Service, Tanya Ruffer. Say that right? We'll present. Good evening.
Good evening.
You've seen Brady Cork. As you know, we have a transition in leadership, so welcome to your first round of the podium.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me this evening. So each year, Missouri public schools have to, are required to adopt a local compliance plan for special education, and then also provide assurance statements to DUC for the provision of special education services to students with disabilities. The Office of Special Education has published an updated local compliance plan for your consideration, and you do have a copy of the local plan. This plan is consistent with the State Plan for Special Education through DUC. And like I said, you do have a copy of it.
Yes, we did.
So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, either in regard to the special education program, the local compliance plan, or the assurance statements that we'll be providing to DUC. Yes, ma'am?
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
So you can hear me a little bit better. So is there anything specific, because we see this every year, so is there anything specific that you would like to tell us about this plan that's unique or different, or?
So, this summer, DUC went through and updated the State Compliance Plan. Most of the provisions in the State Plan had to do with trying to align language with the IDEA. There are some numerical changes within there, not really any substantive changes from last year's plan. But it did require us to do a local compliance adoption.
We should get something easy to work on someday.
You're welcome.
This is First Read again. So if you have questions, you'd be glad to follow up. This is routine business, we see this every September.
That's right. We're glad to have you tonight, so thanks.
Thank you so much.
Yes, good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We will move forward to our next agenda item, 6.02, which is medical stop-loss coverage, and that brings Carol back to the podium.
Yes. So this is also an annual event for you, and as you know, we are self-funded for our health plan, and it is a prudent decision that you purchase stop-loss insurance. So what it does is it mitigates risk, it provides coverage, additional coverage for us in the event we would have an exorbitant claim. And the recommendation for you this evening is, after competitive bids were provided for us through JW Beteral, our benefits broker, that Sun Life Financial is recommended to continue, they're currently our provider, and recommended to continue. The annual premium for this coverage will be $1,461.88, and that's a 13.6 reduction, or $282,461 over the current cost, but here's why. We are recommending through this that we would adjust the specific deductible from $300,000 to $350,000, to $350,000 from $300,000, rather. And that would be a cap then for any specific claim that we might have. So, all that to say, we've done a look back and analyzed the data. We've had three claims in the past five years that have exceeded the $350,000, and so, in analyzing the data, and of course, you can do a look back and be an armchair quarterback, that doesn't mean that's how it would play moving forward, dependent on an individual's health situation, but we believe that we will definitely be in the right place to provide an overall savings based on the historical trend of that information. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. This is First Read, we'll ask you for a vote at the September 22 meeting.
Carol, can you repeat? You said three, looking back three, in how many years?
We have three exceed our threshold in the past five years. We have three exceed our threshold in the past five years.
What you're saying is the increase in deductible is not going to offset the $200,000 in savings?
I was intending to say that it's going to save us. So if I share with you, if we had a $350,000 deductible since 2016, we would have paid an additional $200,000. But in one year alone, we would have reduced our costs by nearly $167,000. So it would offset it if the same expense occurred.
Same deductible, it was the same money.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Any other questions for Carol at this time? Okay, thank you. We will move on to agenda item 6.03, which is go-to-market resolution.
Yes. So I'll put my mask back on. I'll invite Dr. Brent Blevins to the podium beside me. So this evening, we have an opportunity not only to finish our purchase process from the April 2019 bond issue. You may recall that it was a $168 million issue. We sold all but 20 million of it, so we still have that 20 million to sell. And then we also are friends at what is now Stiefel, used to be George K. Baum, and George K. Baum was purchased by Stiefel in this past year. They have identified that we have a refinancing opportunity. So no different than you may decide to refinance your home so that you can reduce your interest rate. We have that opportunity. That only presents itself at the call point, which is typically a 10-year point in time. So this is regarding our 2011 issue. So I will turn this over to Dr. Blevins and I'll share with you that he is a friend of public education, has been for a long time. I know you know him well. He's spent 21 years in public ed, serving in a variety of positions from teacher to superintendent. And he is a registered and licensed managing director with Stiefel and is here this evening to share information. So I'm going to pop open very brief presentation. It's actually a PDF, so you'll just scroll through that, right? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Slide this down for just a second. Good to be back.
Yeah, good evening.
Yeah, good evening. Good evening. Thanks for having me. Carol's correct. We have the opportunity. And this is basically just falling right in line with our phase two of the bond issue from Series 2019, when we issued the first issuance of those bonds. We had planned and were hoping that when the second issue was needed and your construction fund was given the point to issue the remaining 20 million, that it would hit the same time that we could do this current refunding. Reason being, cost of issuance is cheaper. We can do it all at one time and not have to do two separate issues. So it turned out perfect. You never know when you do two separate issues if you're doing the right thing or not. It's turned out absolutely perfect timing as the market not only has stabilized, but it's actually gotten better. So we're going to see interest rates that we can do the $20 million with the additional $9 million of refunding at record low interest rates, saving the district significant dollars as well as issuing the other 20 million to go in the project fund to continue finishing. The project's been identified by the administration, the Board of Education, and the public here in Springfield. So with that said, I'll kind of go briefly over that. You know, Mr. Kenner couldn't be here tonight, so he has to, he kept our picture in there so he could be seen. I'm sure that's why. So the 2020 general obligation bond issuance plan, again, the refinancing for saving purposes, this is refunding your Series 2011 issue, which actually was a refunding of a lease that you actually had out at one point. You used general obligation bonds to pay off that lease, therefore saving money in your operating fund. So now we have the ability to go in and refund that, saving about $2.8 million in your debt service fund. Now, to put that in perspective, we start looking at refundings about 4%. This is going to be closer to 28% savings. So much, much greater than what we initially showed you when we were looking at doing this refunding. This is currently callable March 1st of 2021. You can refund these bonds 90 days prior to the call date. So we're going to try to get this done and sold in October, potentially prior to the election, because you never know if the market can potentially come a little bit dislocated for a few weeks. So we're going to try to get that sold in October and close on December 2nd, so meet that 90-day window for the current refunding. So again, almost 29% savings. That's obviously based upon today's market. We're hoping that stays the same until we actually get in the market on, in your October board meeting. There it is. The 2011 has $9 million currently outstanding. That matures out in 2031. We're not extending the debt on that. That is truly interest rate savings based upon the market. And then again, you have the issuing remaining 2019 authorization. This is just a plan that we put in place. You did not have to pay obviously interest rates the last 16 months on that since we did not issue those bonds. The risk was what's the market going to be when we issue them? They're actually lower than what they were when we issued the first series. So it turned out perfect. We can combine these two, these two issuance on the remaining $20 million of authorization, plus the $9 million of refunding, lower your cost of issuance, and probably have some historical rates. So here's our action plan and timing. We're going to target the October issuance, like I mentioned, October 20th pricing. That will lock in those rates. We will close December 2nd. We'll be back at your October meeting that day to go over the final numbers for the board to approve that particular night. Again, December 2nd closing. First availability to refinance is Series 2011 tax exempt. Due to tax, tax code, this is the first time, it has to be currently callable for us to refund those. That's why we're just not doing it. Like, why have we done this sooner? They are currently callable March 1 of 2021, so that's the first time that you can do those as tax exempt. And again, interest rates are just phenomenal right now. We're seeing, we're seeing some of the lowest there's ever been in the history of our market. So great time to do this. Structure of bonds with two goals in mind. Number one is to obtain the lowest possible yield for the district, get the best rates, make the investors pay the highest amount that they can pay, and you get the lowest yield. And then make sure that you achieve your long-term capital project plan. The last slide I have is just a cash flow analysis. Again, this is just showing what we're trying to do as we look at long-range planning. You can see from 2021 out to 2040, you've got your AV there on the left. Obviously, that green number is because we have not seen your final numbers here in the county. We're still waiting on getting those numbers to give you the exact amount, so we've estimated that. We projected a very conservative growth of a 2.5% on your AV growth. It's been significantly high over that over the last five years in particular. Then your revenue, your existing payment, you can see the 2020 new money payments. So that's your, that's your payment structure on your new money issue. The one next to that is anticipated savings. That anticipated savings is the refunding of the Series 2011 that we talked about. You can see those savings in there of approximately just under $3 million. And then we put in some hypotheticals. Obviously, that's going to depend on moving forward, what happens to your AV growth, what your long-range facility plan looks like. We always try to plan in advance. As you know, that's a very liquid document. We can change that and move that as needed based upon the needs of the district and how they direct us to move forward. But we typically put some hypotheticals in there. We've got an issue in 2023 and then another issue in 2026. And with those two issues, you can still see your fund balances increase each year approximately half a million dollars a year or more. So great time to be borrowing money, great time to be refunding your Series 2011. And be happy to answer any questions on either the refunding or the new monies piece. The timing on this, like you said, I believe you have a go-to-market resolution, which is somewhat just a resolution basically authorizing Stiefel to sell your bonds in the market. That's going to be, I believe, on your agenda on the 22nd of September. And again, October 20th, we will actually be in the market selling those bonds. I will be back that evening to show final numbers to the Board of Education for approval.
Any questions or comments at this time?
It's good to have some happy news.
Yeah, it's good. Great news.
And I would just say, I know some of you all live locally. I wish you could come to some of our ribbon cuttings that we're, where we're actually at in the process. And when I think about the years of advising we've received, we, as in the SPS district, we are just so thankful for the thoughtful guidance and the strategic play with the timing of different things because we're able to do more for our kids because of this.
I appreciate that. I can tell you that Joe and I see the posts on social media of the ribbon cuttings. And he sends them to me and I send them to him and we celebrate with you. So we're in for Springfield kids. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Carol, any other comments before we move forward?
Just that reminder that this will be on the September 22 agenda with that full motion that takes a lot of reading for your consideration that night.
Okay, moving forward, our next agenda item is unfinished business. 7.01, student fees update. Yes, Carol will remain.
I'm a holder.
Your other hat.
So basically what this is, I, I should have thought of this. When we brought to you last month in August, the student fee modifications and suspensions, should have thought this through, that potentially parking would be one that we should have added to that list. And so given that our students are there two days a week, that was a question that came forward. And so this recommendation is an additional modification that we would change our $35 annual fee for student parking to $10 for first semester with the plan to revisit this prior to second semester, see what needs to happen with it then. So that's our recommendation this evening. We are asking for a vote.
Right. Okay. Any questions before I read the recommended action for Carol at this time? The recommended action is that the board approve the suspension and modification of fees and passes as presented. It's a move. We'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any second? Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we are ready to vote. Builder is coming.
Mr. Change Order.
Yeah, but they're always to the center.
I did.
What happened?
Is it online?
Yes.
All right. Okay, motion passes. Our next agenda item is 2019 bond project updates and actions, change orders and agreements. Welcome Travis.
Thank you. Good evening. So in front of you, you see the standard report that I gave you for change orders and agreements. A couple of things that I wanted to point out that look a little different for you is I wanted to add a column that specified what was the change order, what was an agreement. And just for clarity, so you see how it hits the budget, anything that is a change order, that hits the budget because of the contingency of that project. These are items that are above and beyond what the previously approved contract is. And so when you look at the bottom and you see the totals and you see what contingencies are available, those change orders hit that amount. If it's an agreement, it's something that's new. It may be something that's already within the budget for an FFNE expense. It could be an architectural or design expense. And those things are already budgeted with the project. They don't hit contingency whatsoever. And so I wanted you to be able to see that. The other thing that's new on this report is you'll notice that we have a total. And so you can see the total of all of these items is $390,000, which is a lot for one particular report. Something to point out that there's four different items that are agreements that equal about $280,000 of that. So we have the civil engineering services on this report for the York project that we need to get approved so that they can begin doing that work with the architects. We have the special inspection and materials testing for the Jarrett Middle School project is on this report. The demolition of Portland Elementary, which is again tied to the Jarrett project, is on this report. As well as, as we have evaluated the classrooms and some of the storage spaces at Sunshine, there's some additional FFNE that's on this report. And again, those come out of the already existing budgets. And so there's no need for contingency on that. So as you see these reports, most of the others are very small and minor. There are some actual deducts which we like to see as well. But you can see the totals as you go through. One thing to point out on York and Jarrett, there is no project contingency available stated because those projects haven't actually been approved for construction. And so we haven't been able to establish those contingency amounts. Hillcrest, you don't see that as well because it's an FFNE expense and it comes out of the budget, not contingency. So any questions that I'm able to answer for you? And if not, it's the administration's recommendation to approve these change orders and agreements.
Is it appropriate to ask for any updates on the progress at Sunshine?
Sure. So we actually had a coordination meeting this morning with owner, architect and contractor. We are set, we haven't talked about this in board publicly, but we had some meetings. We are set to move students and staff and start school there on October 5th. So we are making arrangements to begin our punch list items throughout the building. Not all of the building will be complete at that time. We will have the critical areas that are needed. We will start delivering and installing classroom furniture and office furniture on the 21st of September. That takes about two weeks for all of the classroom furniture because there's six semi-truck loads full that come in. And so we will work through that process over the next three weeks in order to be able to have the building pretty much completed. They will have to, they will have to apply for and receive at least a temporary certificate of occupancy in order for that to happen, which the plan for that is the 21st of September as well. Right now, we really think that the only major areas that may not be complete will be some of what's in the gymnasium, and that may just be bleachers. They were scheduled to start flooring today in the gymnasium. And so it's progressing. It's still not where we would like it to be, obviously, but it puts us being in Portland for about five weeks with those groups of, those kids and staff members.
Thank you. I like that you asked that.
Is there a complete completion date yet projected?
No, they've not been able to provide that substantial completion date to us. They, they need to provide a substantial completion date as well as a final completion date. Those are usually about two weeks apart. Based on where their schedule is, I would anticipate that it will probably be at least mid-October before we hit a substantial completion date. And even when we hit that substantial completion date, things even like we're dealing with, with Delaware, this won't be the last change orders of some things with Delaware. We still see some things that come up. So hitting the final completion takes a little bit longer to get to.
I'm going to go ahead and read the recommended action then and see if there's any more discussion. Recommended action is that the board approve the change orders and agreements as presented. Anybody want to make that motion?
Kim.
Rita, and then Charles for the second. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, seeing none, we are ready to vote. Thank you Travis for making the adjustments between change orders and agreements and explaining those distinctions. Okay, motion passes. And we are moving forward. Our next agenda item is public comments to address non-agenda items. I'll read our remarks. The Board of Education will allow comments on topics not related to the current agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes for each speaker and will be timed by the Board Secretary. It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meetings. If you have concerns about individuals, those concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors during the schools or in the district office. The board uses this time in our meeting to listen to comments and/or concerns from the public, but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. If you have materials that you want to share, please provide them to the Board Secretary prior to speaking, and she will distribute them to the board members. I think, do we have any, okay. Oh, thank you. Okay, we have one speaker, and that is Tim Haven. I vote there for him. Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
I wanted to talk this evening about protocol and how we conduct ourselves in these meetings and what the rules are and what the rules mean and if they're applied as logical, like an ordinary person would understand them. Without rules, you can't have a public meeting. It'd be impossible. But it's equally important to have rules that are understandable to the public and accurate in their interpretations for the average man to understand, and applied consistently to all people and enforced by those who actually have the authority to enforce them. For example, much misunderstanding and confusion results in unfairness and loss of respect if these rules, if the rules are not enforced. And talking about this little sheet right here that has instructions, I guess are not really rules or laws or instructions. And there's one little sentence in here that's pertinent part, and it's the board uses this And there's one little sentence in here that's pertinent part, and it's the Board uses this time, I think you just said that, in our meetings to listen to comments and our concerns of the public, but will not engage speakers. So, this little instruction puts the onus on the Board members not to talk, but it says nothing about the public. Public's free to say what they want, as long as they don't interrupt the meeting. The obvious intent of that instruction is to avoid wasting time at the podium with people arguing when you want to hear their views. And then, so let's go back to our last meeting. How was this implemented in the last meeting? We had a man who was physically laid hands-on by a police officer, to be removed from the meeting, and it was an order given by the superintendent. Now, the reason he was given that order, was the man supposedly interrupted the meeting, and engaged a more Board member in conversation. But according to this rule, that's not a violation, because it's the Board member who would have been in violation, not the man. That's the correct interpretation of this. Also, the superintendent would not have been in charge of the meeting. It would have been the President of the Board. So, when the man was engaged in conversation with the President, he was interrupted by the superintendent. And this all happened during a five-minute recess, when the meeting was not even in order, so there was actually no violation, because we had a recess. It wasn't regular meeting. So, I just think that you can't go laying hands on people, when you don't even know your own rule. And I think I'm doing apology, and I think this Board didn't stick up for me, when I hadn't done anything wrong. An officer laid his hands on me, which is an assault. So, I would expect that apology.
Thank you, Cam. Time is up. Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is strategic update, focus area one, goal one, end of year report. And I believe we have several people coming, but at first, we have Dr. Brett Range, Executive Director of Student Services, to set us up.
All right. And as Dr. Range comes to the podium, just to give you a little context on focus area reports, right? We do this every year, multiple times. We do end of year reports. That actually happen at the beginning of year, because they're a reflection on the previous year. And then we do mid-year reports that really happen mid-year, right? So, we do updates on each of the goals that exist in our strategic plan, as well as the focus areas. Just to provide you, those who've been on the board and treat, I know you've seen these as part of the audience, in the time that you've been coming to board meetings. We've worked hard to provide accurate and regular reliable data that we can monitor real time. Unfortunately, this year is going to be different, right? As we go into focus area reports, I just want to set the stage, and I know Dr. Range will hit this a little bit also throughout this, is we don't have the same data points, right? So, when we talk about the surveys that are typically sent to parents and community and teachers in the spring, that we would use for some of this data, we don't have a comparison. So, we will be giving those in the fall this year, and use that as a new set of data, but we won't have it in the end of year report. We also don't have end of year attendance rates, right? So, we have the mid-year attendance rates that we gave at mid-year, but we don't have the end of year attendance rates and discipline rates. So, those data points won't be included in this year's report. They will, the physical report, if you looked at the full report, has the mid-year data, which the Board has already seen, because that is the only data point that we had to put in the end of year report. We didn't want it to leave blank. We wanted to say, this is where we were mid-year, but we didn't have an end of year data point to work from. So, this year, we'll go back to the regular data collection for everything that we can collect regularly. I just wanted you to be aware that what you see in the report, is a lot of mid-year data, and then we aren't presenting that mid-year data, because you've already been a part of that mid-year report data conversation. So, they'll present as much accurate and new information as possible, and then the reports will really just kind of capture the year at a reflection, knowing that COVID really disrupted a lot of data collection, both here and as we move forward into academic data points. So, that's kind of the setup for what's coming tonight, as well as in the months to come. So.
Sets the stage nicely.
Yeah, and you get to go first.
I do, I do. So, it's good to see you. Thank you for having us. And I am going to be here with my team. So, I'm going to present, and then Jim will come up here, and Jean, and then Rhonda, and then I'll come back to close the presentation on the last strategy in this focus area. So, make sure the clicker's working here.
As a reminder, we put the slide numbers on the slide deck, and just kind of keeping with our protocol that we've kind of established over the last few months. If you'll take notes, they'll be glad to answer any questions at the culmination. Any of the speakers will be glad to jump in at the end of the presentation.
So, these intro slides set the stage, and these will be consistent with pretty much every focus area or strategic plan update that we give. So, the neat one about this one, is we were able to add the equity and diversity focus area this year. So, you will hear from Evanya later on this school year, on her first year presenting and the strategies that accompany the focus area. But we are in focus area one tonight. That's where we're going to spend our time. There's the goal within that area, and it encompasses the work that Jim, Rhonda, and Jean do on a daily basis. So, this is our demographic, kind of like to set the stage, who are we talking about here? And these are the kiddos we're talking about. So, this is the district enrollment, the last count date, which was last January, on January the 29th, is when Amy provided this information to us. So, what I wanted to draw your attention to on this slide, left-hand side's lunch status, this is district as a whole. Right-hand side is the student subgroups, that we report back to Desi. The black percentage, Hispanic percentage, and multi percentages, if you were to look at this exact same slide last year, have come up a little bit in those areas. So, I think that's noteworthy, and we need to recognize that. Then when you break that information down by division, which we always do on the next slide, you can see how that spreads out across elementary, middle, and high school. And again, lunch status is along the top, and then student subgroups, as we break the demographics down along the bottom.
Am I violating a rule?
Oh, you're good.
I'm distracted by this. That free and reduced, and then what's the FL? I'm sorry, I'm not following.
It's a good question. Free, reduced, full pay, reduced.
It's free, full.
Yeah, free, full, reduced.
I was struggling with that FL. I couldn't, thank you.
Right. It'd probably be good for us to spell that out, probably. So, yeah, free, full, and reduced. So, you can see how it breaks out across the different grade spans. And this slide looks somewhat similar, if you were to compare it to last September's too. Moving into the priority metrics. So, this is really the meat of these presentations. These priority metrics and the process measures, because these are the things that we're, the way that we're, what are we measuring to prove that we're making gains in these strategies and these focus areas? And so, a couple of years ago, this started in 1718, when administration led a SLT, which is a senior leadership team, also community members. What are high value data points that the system felt was important? And those were termed priority metrics. And then the next step of that was breaking those metrics down into climate and culture metrics, and academic success and graduate outcomes. And so, the scorecard that we're dealing with tonight, is the climate and culture scorecard, which is in the white paper that was provided to you two. We produce those at the district level, at the grade span level, so elementary, middle, and high school. And then each individual site, school site, gets a climate and culture scorecard four times a year, so they can, you know, drill down the metrics in their own building. For this report, for the report that we're giving tonight, these are the metrics that we would be talking about within the climate and culture scorecard. So, you can see them bulleted out there. They range from family perceptions about school safety, to percent of kids who considered suicide, down to discipline, and then also our attendance rates. Now, again, many of these have been impacted because of the pandemic, and we'll talk about that. But that's what you normally see in this report. So, how has the pandemic impacted this? So, the left-hand side, we didn't collect this, and we're not going to report it, because we didn't collect the student and family perceptions about school safety last year, because that would have happened during fourth quarter. And kids went to full-time virtual instruction, and they had a lot on their plate, so we didn't send a survey out to them. The items in the middle are collected and reported tonight, and we will present that information to you. So, safety drills completed, percent of kids who considered suicide, and the percent of kids who have been bullied on property. And then like John said, that right-hand side, not collected, but we did include in the white paper, were the discipline metrics, and also the attendance metrics. And you saw those metrics. You saw the exact same charts in February of 2020. That's the last time that we came and presented to you. So, those will be the same. Now, there are a bunch of process measures in here that have been updated. So, school police response times is an example, flu vaccinations, Jean will talk about that. We've got some good news to celebrate there. Number of students referred to mental health needs is a process measure that Rhonda tracks. So, all of those, a lot of the process measures, we were able to gather information during fourth quarter, and they are going to be reported this evening, and they are in the white paper. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to my friend Jim Farrell, and he will take over strategy one, which is school safety.
Welcome. Welcome, Jim.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so, we'll go through this fairly quick. So, some of our highlights, and some of what we've done well, even with the pandemic hitting us, was prior to that, we were able to get 3,343 employees trained in ALIS. In addition, we also trained 500 PMAC employees. So, substitutes have an idea and know what's going on, and what should happen in the event that we need to enact an ALIS situation. One of my favorite things, and I commented, I was so happy last year we were getting it, was the visitor management system. I think that was a huge step for this district. You know, you want to keep people intent on doing bad out, that's how you do it. You just don't let them in. And the visitor management system has just been really good. We've had some good success with it, nothing terrible, but you know, it's been successful. We got the secure vestibules started, and we're finishing them. We did 28 audits, Dr. Range and I, and Bruce Douglas, just to make sure that everything's working in proper order. And in February, we trained all the principals, so they would know, okay, this is how, this is the expectations, this is what you should be doing, this is how it should work. And then we trained all the site secretaries in March. Just letting the Board know, I try to be very proactive in what your school police training, and what we go to train for. This was last year, and we went through a four-hour training on verbal de-escalation. A full day of implicit bias that was taught by the Anti-Defamation League. I made a connection at a conference, and the guy was phenomenal. And then cultural competency, a four-and-a-half-hour training block. So, that's some of the training, just some of the training we did last year. Our tech's tip line, it's down slightly from last year, to be expected, because of the pandemic. But we still got 346 tips, which we followed up on all of them. And they were followed up by us or by school administrators. Our safety drills, you know, everybody knows that schools are required to do four fire drills, and three intruder drills, and three storm drills, or four storm drills per site. This kind of impacted us a little bit with missing the whole last quarter. So, in March, we went ahead, and this is where we were at in March 2020, we still had an 82% completion rate. So, it's kind of fun, because some of the principals, it's like, they want to see, they want to make sure they get them done, and they're very urgent about it, which is phenomenal. Our calls for service, once again, I wouldn't call it, even though they're down, I wouldn't call this a celebration, just because we had a whole quarter of no students in school. I would say we probably would have ended about where our averages typically go. And then everybody, I think this is one of my favorites, because this is the absolute result of having school police officers in schools. Our priority one response time is under two minutes. And there's not a police station, police department in the country that can tout that, unless they're calculating like we are, by having officers in school.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's mine. I'm tickled about that. You know, so priority ones, we're under two minutes. Priority twos, we're still under five. You know, and a priority two isn't an urgent call. And then this is thanks to Jean Grable and her great staff. We got 478 folks trained in CPR first aid, and 578 on our AEDs. And once again, the numbers are going to be impacted. And this is some of the things that the bond and the safety goals of the district helped us accomplish. We've got new intercoms and cabling for the additional speakers, which, you know, you folks have been in our schools, you know how important that was. We renovated 33 vestibules, have made them secure vestibules. The construction of the Fulbright Early Childhood Center and the new Delaware. My goodness, I've been walking through those schools, and I'm just, I'm in awe. I'm walking around in those buildings in awe. I'm like, wow. You know, and then Parkview and Central High School, they both have new camera systems, which is the new one, and what an upgrade. You know, we actually have some old camera systems where we're still utilizing recording on DVR. So, to know that we're moving forward there is huge. And we spread out approximately another 50, Bruce Douglas is a genius with this stuff, and he was able to manipulate his money and our money and everybody's money to do it, and help us find 50 additional cameras that we can put up. So, our next steps, we're going to create videos, Jean and her group are going to create videos for the CPR and AED, and the procedures and the practices can be, you know, so it can be done in individual schools. We are going to deploy ALIS training again this year, which I'm tickled about. I think if you train it, they know it. And we'll do that in the second quarter. We've got 17 new vestibules to audit, and just walk through and make sure they're working as we planned. And then we'll train the middle school and high school principals and their secretaries. And all new construction, it'll migrate to the new security camera systems, which we're going to focus on the high schools first, with interior cameras in the building. And with that said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Jean.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you about health. And believe you me, in this time and age, we definitely need to be continuing to focus on health and safety for our students and our staff. And I want to tell you how well we're working towards that within the district, and it's been a collaborative effort among our partners, both in the community. But just to see what's happening with the staff, you would be very proud about how they're incorporating these health and safety issues all of the time, every day, and incorporating those health and safety practices every day within the school setting. And it's amazing to see what they're doing. So, I just want to give you some highlights. You can see the ready-set supply even changed this year a bit, about looking at supplies for students. When we were looking at having those supplies go directly to teachers, now that expanded to, we want to make sure that all students, especially at the elementary level, have individual supplies, rather than looking at that focus on communal supplies, because we had to be responsive to what was going on with COVID-19. And then, of course, we still have a significant number of our students that have health needs, and now more than ever, we want to make sure that we are working with those students. So, even before school began, the nurses were working with the primary healthcare providers, and making sure that those individual healthcare plans were in place, especially looking at those that have asthma, and those that have chronic health conditions, with wearing a mask might be a little more of a challenge for them. So, we've been working with those individual healthcare providers. I had an opportunity to meet with the pediatric section chairs for Cox and Mercy, as well as Jordan Valley Community Health Center. And so, we are meeting on a regular basis, and that's a marvelous thing. In 29 years of being here, being able to meet with all of them together, and have all of those systems together, meeting on a regular basis, is a phenomenal feat with that. So, then, we're going to celebrate the flu vaccines, which is amazing too, last year. And you know, we want to continue that momentum for this year as well. And the additional food, if you think about addressing food insecurity, and working with Ozark's Food Harvest especially, they stepped up to the plate during March and April to provide additional mobile food pantry distributions. They're like, we want to help. They're like, we want to help, we want to help support what Nutrition Services is doing and providing for the community, we want to step up to do that. And so, they did. And so, we were able to provide additional mobile food grocery distributions in that way. So, that was another major success, especially during the time where we had, we were fully virtual. So, some exciting things, you know, Brett always tells you, green is good, so green is go. So, you can see that all of these increased, which is a major thing. We really wanted to focus on making sure that, especially at the middle school level, because they were down the year before last, so they did, elementary and middle school and all levels increased. And look at ELL, they, they were, they went up by 14% across the, all of the areas, so that was great as well. So, we still have some work to do and we expect flu vaccines to be coming in mid-September so that we'll start those. And is that going to be a challenge? Yeah, you betcha. But we certainly want to support the health and wellbeing of our students and we've been talking with the health department as well as the, the health systems as well to make sure that we provide those vaccines onsite for kids who need it and our staff. So, obviously, we want to continue to work with our partners and we, we just talked to Ozark's Food Harvest and we already have some mobile food distribution set up for September, so mid-September, we're going to do that. We have had a couple of pop-up vaccine clinics that we've worked with Jordan Valley to do and those really were well, where people just drove up and they were able to go in into the mobile van and get their vaccine, get back in their car and go on. They're used to doing that now with mobile food distributions and picking up items at the school. So, parents were comfortable with bringing their kids there for those vaccines. So, we're, we're working with them to continue to do that. We're certainly moving forward with our farm-to-school program. We did receive that DART Family Foundation grant this past year and so we're excited about moving forward with that. And then, obviously, we had some differences as far as challenges and new directions for us to go in when, when we're working with a global pandemic. So, that meant a lot of planning for us and a lot of being reactive and responsive because what was true in March is not true today. And so, we know that we had to be very flexible and be responsive and constantly researching and making those changes and adapt to those changes on a regular basis. So, one of the positive things out of that was that we began to work on a weekly basis with meeting with Spring, with the Springfield-Green County Health Department. So, I also invited the other school nurses, lead nurses from the rest of the Green County area schools so that we're, we're meeting on a weekly basis to discuss, okay, what are next steps? In addition, that we wanted to make sure that the school nurses were trained, so we had training for both of the regular school nurses as well as substitute, as well as the substitute school nurses, and doing contact tracing training. So, they attended that support through the health department. And then, we also have another six-hour training that the nurses are doing on their own time to, to help with that. So, we want to make sure that we're being supportive. And I can tell you with the number of calls that I make on a daily basis, parents appreciate the fact of having someone from the school district talk to them. And they really like it when it's a health professional that, that gives them a call to because they are scared and they want to know some facts and some details and they want support. And, and they appreciate the fact that we're calling them, even when I have to tell them, well, okay, you've been a contact of someone that is positive, individual that's positive and you need to quarantine. Even with that and going through that information, that's, that's been very well, they've been very responsive to that. And now that the nurses, on Wednesdays, that's pretty much focus of, of what they're doing. They're following up on a weekly basis for those that are in quarantine. So, that's, they're getting another call from the school nurse as well. So, we're really working very well with doing contact tracing and with the health department too. Okay.
Oh, you want to take my mask? See, here I am. I'm so on it. I am so used to having the mask on, I didn't even realize I didn't have it on. Oh, my gosh, that's horrible for the health record.
We love you, Jean.
Good evening. You're welcome.
Yeah, well, I can take mine off for a couple of minutes now. Okay, so, the information that I'm going to share with you tonight is a lot of the same that we've talked about earlier. There hasn't been a lot of change, except you'll see that we certainly have had some impact on mental health as a result of what's happening with COVID. And I have to say that our counselors have done a wonderful job of stepping, stepping up to the plate and trying out new strategies to connect with students virtually. So, that's what's been really, I think, the important piece of what I want to convey tonight is that even though things are very different for us, we're used to being able to be more hands-on and be able to connect students, as have all educators. But particularly, when you have a student who's hurting or has some really serious emotional trauma that's been occurring either because of the situation or in spite of the situation, I think our counselors have really created a, a lot of really good strategies that they can use. So, I feel good about that. So, our highlights are just the same as they were pretty much last year. We have, we had over 2,500 of our staff that participated in the mental health awareness training. The partnership with Burrell continues to expand. We went into the Parkview and Central Theater patterns along with Early Childhood and Studee last year. And then, most of you are probably aware that we were a pilot site for teen mental health first aid at Kickapoo High School, but that was expanded last year to include all 10th graders in our district. We actually got most of those sessions in before we had, because it didn't start till second semester, but we did get them in, all with the exception of a few sessions at Hillcrest that were going to occur after spring break. So, it, we really felt good that most of that was able to go ahead, even in spite of everything else that we had to work with last year. The first data that I just want to briefly go over with you is the differences that we've seen in the number of referrals because of our expanded partnership with, with Burrell. As you can tell, 2019, we really beefed it up a lot. We added, we've got all but Kickapoo and Glendale Theater patterns in the expansion. So, as you can see, we, we now have over 500 students that are enrolled in services. Burrell is providing 41 clinicians and support specialists to meet that need, which is up significantly from the six that we had in 2017.
You say six?
So, this is quite an accomplishment. I feel like that they're making a difference. We are continuing to work on, hope by the next time that I'm up here in front of you, we will have some, some outcome data to share with you. We, we have a process for some of the assessments that Burrell uses to document mental health functioning, the students, as well as comparing it to our data with discipline and, and that's, we hope to be able to share some of that with you in the future. We're, we're continuing to work on that. The data that the school counselors collect is more based on the students that they actually see. As you can tell, there's very little difference between 2018 and 20 and the number of students who actually expressed suicidal thoughts to their school counselor. They, they logged this and then they turned it in at the end of the year. The students that exhibited self-harming behavior went up a little bit, but that's staying pretty steady from what we've seen for the last couple of years. And then, this data is the data we've collected for many years. The survey is given to all students in the state of Missouri every two years. And so, we're able to, to see some differences in the percentage of students who indicated that they had considered suicide within the last 12 months. And we're seeing that across the state. So, for us that are in the prevention business and all of the initiatives that, not only in our community, but we've initiated in the school, we feel like that this is showing us that some of that is making a difference. We, we hope that that's the reason, there's not, we, we don't know that for sure, but it's got to be doing something. We're, we're trying to intervene early to help students understand how they could cope with some of the issues that they're, they're experiencing, giving them strategies to use to connect with adults and hopefully, all is making a difference. In addition, the bullying incidents have also decreased, well, just the trending down for the last several years from what we had seen even as far back as 2010. And as you can see, 31% is still too many for our district, but at least it's going down. And so, we're hoping again, that some of our initiatives that we have implemented in regard to reporting has made a difference. So, so that's coming from self-reported data from our students in grade six through 12. All right, so, next steps. We're going to continue the partnership with Burrell, it's going so well for us. We are beginning to expand into Kickapoo this semester. We had our onboarding meeting last week with the counselors and principals and so they will be taking on additional referrals in Kickapoo. And then, after beginning of second semester, we will add Glendale Theater schools. So, by the end of this year, we will have all of the theater schools, all the schools in our districts will, will be part of that expansion partnership. So, that's, that's been three years coming, but it is significant difference and as long as they can continue to keep hiring folks, we're going to be able to benefit from, from that partnership. We also are going to continue with offering the youth mental health first aid for our teachers. Most of it will be virtual this year. They, they've offered the opportunity for them to do some pre-work. It's normally an eight-hour session, but staff now can do three hours of that on their own and then there's a four-hour virtual session. So, that will cut down on some of the out-of-class time for that. We're going to offer some outside of contract time so that, and offer some stipends for people to do that. Community partnership is supporting that for us, so that, that's a real benefit. We're also going to continue with the one-hour mental health awareness training during second quarter. We're going to revise that somewhat this year and really emphasize some of the mental health issues that students and staff are experiencing because of the situation with COVID, as well as some of the other things going on in the world right now. So, we're going to, we're going to make it a little bit this year. And then, the other thing that we're really excited about, we, we are working on a grant to offer a family education series this year, which will be virtual. We're going to, once each quarter, we're going to offer some documentaries and wellness, mental health wellness families. The first one is going to be on anxiety and then we're going to move into cyber wellness and some other topics of interest to families. So, we're hoping that that will help everyone to normalize some of the things that are happening right now and also give us another way to connect with families so that they know that we're still out here and we're still trying to provide resources for them. So, okay, that's it for me. Back to you, Brett.
Thank you, Rhonda. That was great.
And then, I will take and close with strategy 1.4, which is the strategy that really focuses on under-resourced and underrepresented students. One of the strategies that does that, we've got multiple. So, highlights in this area are, are these, these bullets here. So, all employees with, through Yvonia Chip, were trained last year in equity and diversity as well as members of SLT and the executive leadership team. We were trained in equity through her department. MSU came over, Dr. Foster came over and provided some training for us, the SLT, SLT and ELT members last year. So, we were, we were excited with the training that we got last year to support us in this area. EDAC, many of you were, some of you, all, many of you were engaged in that work. EDAC met last year and provided recommendations on how the district can improve equity processes. I led the team a couple of years ago to revise the discipline code of conduct and that was implemented in all sites last year. And we, it was well-received and the discipline data indicates that it, that it did what it was supposed to do and helping keep kids in school. Elementary and middle schools within the central high school feeder pattern were trained with conscious discipline. So, Dr. Anderson and Dr. Dublin partnered on that. And then, the last one is Dr. Anderson, the PBIS, which is a behavior management system, was deployed throughout all elementary buildings. They're all using that pride acronym and they were all trained in, in having a universal approach into managing kiddo's behavior at the elementary level. So, like I said, at the beginning, and John said this too, the priority metrics in this area, the attendance and discipline, we've reported to you in February, they're, because they're semester to semester. But these were three highlights that I kind of wanted to pull out, if you remember, from those charts, and it's in the white paper too, it's the white paper that's loaded right now. So, and a success that we have, two successes, the percent of students with discipline, so that, a kid that has a discipline infraction, a detention and in-school suspension and out-school suspension, it decreased across the district and with all student subgroups. So, if we were to highlight that chart, and if you remember when you saw it in February, it was all green when you looked at it at the district level. So, that was a success. We still have work to do there, but that's one thing that we wanted to highlight. Loss of instruction, the second bullet is the same, looks the same way. It was, if, if you were to look at it through kind of that lens of green, it decreased across the district within all student subgroups. So, we're keeping kids in school where we want them to be in front of the teacher. And the last point here, the percent of students, the metric, and this 90, 90 attendance metric, it increased at the district level and then it increased within six of the nine student subgroups. We still have work to do with three of the student subgroups based on that data pull from February. But we did, we felt like we did, we did have a little bit of success in the attendance area. Our next steps in this area, Yvonia is going to work with Amy St. John, our Director of Performance Analytics, to develop some additional equity metrics around future scorecards. We've, we're kind of branding this maybe scorecards 2.0 and they may look a little bit different than what we've had in the past, but, and I know that they've been engaged in conversations about what other equity lenses can we apply to that, to the scorecard to help principals really drive systematic changes at the building. All sites, you've, you've heard Jim talk about training, you've heard Rhonda talk about training, we will do equity training this year and that, that started this week, actually. Yvonia and her team started to roll that out today. So, all sites will participate in equity training, revised version of that. Dr. Dublin and Dr. Nguyen, last year, let our alternative program redesign group, and as a result of that redesign, we were able to allocate some resources differently. So, four of our elementary and four of our middle school sites, a couple of site behavior classrooms that are going to be deployed this year to provide some support for kids that are struggling a little bit with their behaviors. Dr. Woodard will take this project on because Dr. Dublin left this for him, but four middle schools are going to participate in PBIS just like elementary did last year. So, they will, to work with the Agency of Teaching and Learning and with Missouri State to, to get teachers trained on universal strategy to managing kiddo's behavior. A district team is going to be, is being brought together to talk about universal tennis strategies, to try to standardize what, what is, what are appropriate strategies we, that are having low attendance at the elementary, middle and high school level. And I will lead that team, that, that project is with me. So, that, we started to, to meet on that, I mean, on Friday with the attendance advisors to get the ball rolling, to continue to get the ball rolling and we hope to have something done by the end of fourth quarter. That being said, the last bullet, I think is, you can't talk about always coming back to that. That last bullet is COVID-19, the pandemic that we're in the middle of right now, obviously throws a monkey wrench in a lot of this stuff. So, we will continue to monitor this on how it's impacting discipline and for sure, how it's going to impact attendance because attendance probably is going to look different. But we'll be flexible and we'll be, do that. End of year updates, so in a month from now, we are going to come to you that evening with two goal reports, Focus Area 1, Goal 2, and Focus Area 1, Goal 3. We're going to put those in both that evening as we try to get through these, hopefully by winter break. That's from me. Questions from me or my team that I can help answer, try to answer?
We can, we can go in order of presenters or we can just ad pod it, whichever, whichever feels comfortable. Jerry's got a question.
No, more comment.
No, more comment. And it's Jim. It's, one is to just thank you and appreciate what you guys do day in and day out in our schools. Know your statistics, your response time, and your training is impressive, but that is totally secondary to what you do in our schools. As role models and mentors and developing relationships, I just, I just really, really appreciate what you guys do day in and day out. Be there. I don't care what you hear, us, the country, whatever. I, I'm just thankful that you guys are in our buildings, working with our kids, working with our students, working with our staff to do that. And I just, I just want you, I can't speak for the board, but I speak for myself, how much I appreciate you guys being there day in, day out. Statistics aside, I, I do, but I don't. I care about what you guys are doing every day in the buildings, and that's more important than statistics at all. So thank you so much for what you guys do.
Thank you Jerry. Any comments, questions?
So just hearing all of the different reports from everyone, I, I heard a refrain of training, and I appreciate all the training, but it became very apparent to me how much training we are requiring of our teachers outside of instructional kind of training on their classroom kinda stuff. And I am appreciative of it, but also have some concerns about ongoing training, which is not anything to really take effect. And I don't have a, a real question about it. It's more of a comment about seeing the huge scope of all of what we're asking of our teachers, and appreciating how much effort goes into their out-of-class kind, not, their non-instructional kind of training that's required of them, but also recognizes training and the ongoing need for the training is something that I am concerned about. Also, it, it seems that this overlapped, probably with many of the strategies, but particularly with this, your strategy for attendance, with the one that Yvania has for attendance also for goal. So I'm hoping that there's coordination of those who, EDAC team who worked on attendance as a one of her strategies. And so I'm hoping to see some, some coordination and collaboration there also. And the last thing was for the, the school police. I don't know, I, I'm new to the school board, and I don't know the relationship with, that you all have with the individuals. I do know that I follow nationwide some of the concerns that people have with school police. And I appreciate the work that you all do. However, I do have concerns, and I'm hoping that the relationship that you guys do have with the schools is one that is, I don't know the word.
Positive?
That's, that's, that's a start. That is a start. And I, I think overall, I have heard mostly positive things in Springfield Public Schools regarding school police. But I am keeping a close eye on that, because it is something that is concerning to me because of what we see happening nationwide with regards to the relationship between school police and particularly students of color. And I just wanted to make sure that, I, I, I appreciate the training that you guys do, and I, that you reported that you guys done. But I would hope that also that, that's ongoing training that needs to happen on a regular basis.
Thank you Sharita. Yeah, I've got some comments that I'm, so any other comments or questions?
I will certainly make my quarterly admission that it's
Hold on, is it tied?
I know where you're gonna say it, true.
The minute it came out of my mouth, I thought.
We've actually talked about report card, yes, maybe moving to, because that's a more appropriate educational term, instead of scorecard, report card, because we all kinda know, and we live by report cards. But we had that discussion. Thanks, Terrence.
Just, I'll go ahead and interject a couple of comments, and then we'll see what, what more there is. I'm a learner, sorry. So Jim, just to thank you for your commitment to all different types of training for your staff and to our buildings. We can certainly celebrate the average response time, something to definitely celebrate. Thank you for testing the vegetables. I mean, you think about notables. I know it's hard to tell with my mask on.
Thank you so vegetable, so thank you for the clarification.
We do test vegetables around here too. But in all sincerity, we advocate it for safety for the additional layer of our buildings. And it's one thing to allocate the money and the other, but then to hear you all are testing it and looking at it from cameras and, and looking at, you know, and just the training that it takes to be able to implement that. I, I enjoyed hearing about that tonight, so thank you for that. The visitor management system, yes, there's not gonna be as many visitors this semester, but at least we've got the system in place, moving to you all time to test it out and to train staff. And then I guess I would echo just what a couple others have said, is really just no matter what season we find ourselves in, you and your team are critical. And so I, I appreciate all the effort. And even in this time of, of safety, it's a different type of safety, but you all are still critical for us. Jean, Jean, as you were talking, I was thinking about the asterisk, other duties as assigned. And I just wanna say thank you for your seasoned leadership, for being here for so many years, have all these established relationships with these community buddy in place, that when something like this caught us off guard, you mobilized those resources and those relationships to advocate for our students and staff. And I just think that you're helping us navigate this season because of those years of leadership and those relationships that you have with community partners. So thank you so much for that. And we can celebrate flu vaccines. Rhonda, the expanded Burrell partnership to, to look at all of our theater patterns by the end of this year is just a huge, huge celebration. So thank you for all of your work for that. And I can't wait about how the teen mental health first aid training goes with our high school students and what that may look like moving forward, because we know students are the front line of hearing about things. So I enjoyed that. And I love that you're thinking about adjusting the mental health awareness training for SPS staff, given the current environment, because we know that adjustment leaving, there's a lot of different emotions that are surfacing right now. So I'm pleased to hear you all are already thinking about those adaptations. Thank you. I've got one more question for Brett. The revised discipline code, do you think, I know the E-Force is made up of a potpourri of different, you know, teachers and different people looking at that and revising that. Does that an ongoing journey of feedback and responding to that? That's my first question.
Yeah, so that first year, we revised it. There were a lot of changes. And, and the major change was a resource you, you all provided, which has been tremendous in helping us, which is a consistent deployment of using detention prior to suspending a kiddo that might've had some behavior issues. So the code, that first year, two years ago, we revised it. There was a lot of work that went into that. Last year, we brought together another group to, to say, how is this going? We, we did some, Dr. Martin and myself led that group, and we made some tweaks to that. We will do that each year. It won't be a full-on look at all the, the scope of the, the code of conduct, that, you know, every code that we, we use. But it'll be a group that is brought together to say is areas that truly are, are continuing to be issues that we need to really consider tweaking still. We didn't have that many changes this spring, because I think we did a pretty good job the year before of, again, the, the big, the big thing was giving principals the opportunity to use detention if they needed to, so they don't, they don't have to suspend a kiddo. The, the code was written prior to, two years ago, is so strict that sometimes it backed them into a corner, and we didn't want that.
Okay, okay, I know. I, I remember hearing the briefings along the way, so I just was getting clarification on that. And then, do you think the decrease on page thirty-three about the discipline, sorry, going back to page thirty-three?
Oh, on slide thirty-three.
Slide thirty-three, sorry.
Got it.
Percentage of students with discipline decrease across the district and within all sub. Do you think that decrease changed because of the change in policy, or because of the reporting of discipline behavior?
I think it has to do with, I think it's twofold. I think it's making principals aware that we are, we're tracking this. We have a metric announced that's tracking this. So we want you to be really intentional and think about the discipline kiddo prior to doing it, and how that's going to impact him or her. So I think it's, it's a mind shift with some of our principals of keeping the metric out in front of them. And then the second piece of it is, is the, the code itself, is adding the ability, not only for detention, but also just conferences. We're, if you look at the code of conduct in the handbook, each of those, most, every one of them leads with a conference. So making sure the principals, we, they had the flexibility, they don't have, you don't have, we don't want you to lead with in-school suspension. You have the ability to lead with conferences or detention prior to suspending a kid and taking that kid away from his or her teacher. So I think, I think it is, it's a combination of principals being aware of it, and, yes.
Thank you.
That would be my perception, so.
Right. That's all we got tonight, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions that are going this forward? Are there any comments on this?
No, I just appreciate the team, and would echo all of your comments. Great leadership across the district. It's a reflection of last year. But I think we touched on a little bit of the work that it's transitioning into this year. And many of these leaders have lifted incredibly hard with their teams to do things that you'll never see on this, right? Like reschedule six thousand kids, right, to full virtual. And to build and train, contact, trade, work on the weekends and evenings to ensure what kid got quarantined and what kid, what, what activity continued, continue to go on, and what has to be canceled now. So the efforts by these teams, the leaders, present a large group of people that are doing amazing work. So just appreciate everybody's lifting.
Thank you Brett and team. Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, report from administration. Our first item is superintendent update.
Yeah, we're back in study session, so I'll provide the update this meeting, and then when we get to regular session, I'll have the entire team, but just a number of items that I wanted to bring you up to date on, many of you, but just wanna make sure in case you have any questions. So USDA expanded the exemption for free lunch all the way through the end of the calendar year, as long as money doesn't run out. We had talked about that concern just a month or so ago, and there's lots of pressure from educational organizations to keep that accessible. So we're happy to, first two weeks of school, I would say have gone incredibly well. We knew that there would be cases of COVID in our schools, just like there were this summer. We had worked on approaches this summer to manage those, and we're continuing to refine those approaches this far. We had two cases in the first week. We had twenty-five cases last week between students and staff. Turning that on the dashboard, that we'll update every Monday for the public. And then you're well aware that the notices go out. You get the same public notices that our community gets when there's a potential infection in a campus, or in an area, or an event. And some of those might be on the case count, and some of those might not, because they might be a person that's not actually a student or a staff member. Plus, we can't really put that data out and be good communicators to our parents, our students, our staff, and our community. Really proud of the work that's been going on. I've been in forty schools so far, and I'm so impressed to see our teachers and our students back together. And I would say that's both virtually and personally. I walked through many of our virtual classrooms with our teachers sitting there, working hard, the students on the screen, and engaging them. And they are all flexing, right? Many teachers have talked about, you know, for their first-year teachers all over again. There's so much of that going on, and they're nimble, they're working hard, they're happy to be back at it with students, and then adjusting as necessary. So we continue to listen, what feedback they need, what they need from the district in order to make sure that we're serving students well. We have really focused the first couple of weeks on relationships and making sure kids got reconnected with the adults in our schools. And now we'll shift quickly to part of our culture of knowing exactly where kids are, so that we can help and support them as they move forward. So that process is underway. enrollment, just systemically, and we knew that this would be a consequence of COVID, as, as compared to the twenty-four one that we saw on the slide earlier, around twenty-two percent, just a hair over down systemically. I would tell you that the largest chunk of that is kindergarten. So if you look at our kindergarten numbers as compared to last year, it's down by a couple hundred. There's a number of reasons that we could probably surmise regarding that. One of them is kindergarten is not, it's not mandatory, right? So apparently it's not compulsory, the attendance age in the state of Missouri. Most people think it is, but it's actually not. And some parents know that, and they're choosing different options, or homeschooling, or waiting out until maybe this thing settles down. We're still working to identify them and get them in school and provide any supports. Knowing that we have a full virtual option, we are trying to connect with them as much as the biggest location. We've seen a total number of our enrollments continue to be about three to one, right? So seventy-four percent are in-person, twenty-six percent virtual. We did allow for that first week of school shifts to continue to happen, in case you didn't have that, that placement that really fits. Unless there's a hardship now, because teachers really need to stabilize their learning environment, and we can't continue to shift students every week, because we'll have to shift staff every week, because we have to have the staff kinda follow the child where it is. So we've stabilized that. There is a hardship process if we get to it, but we're really landing about where we started, seventy. Some of the other things that are playing out, and you can expect, with twenty-six percent of our kids in virtual extracurricular programming, participation is down. We are working, our athletic director, very hard at looking at the number of kids in each program to see if co-ops are necessary. You know, we co-opted last year at a couple of our middle schools football. There weren't enough kids in seventh and eighth grade to have a full seventh and eighth grade team at both, but we can put them together and make that happen. So Misha will allow us to apply for emergency co-ops, so that they can at least have some activities and games, and not have seasons canceled if at all possible. So Josh and Marty are working incredibly hard to find solutions to situate enough students to actually create a, a team. So that continues to play out. I really appreciate them, as well as Misha becoming more flexible and creative in their approaches to make sure that students continue to have those opportunities. On the resource side, I know Carol's kept you updated, but we did receive the county Carol's Grant Award. So that's a significant amount of resources, well over a million dollars, that helps cover some of these significant added costs that has happened to our system in order to put all the safety protocols and procedures, the number of purchases necessary. So we really appreciate the county having access to those resources, and then allocating them to our school district. In addition, one-off grants for some of the expenditures that we've incurred, maybe childcare programming that we did in the spring, transportation costs that might've happened at that time, technology and costs that are gonna take place in the fall. We know we've, several of those things that are new costs, so we're applying to every one of those situations. Because these stimulus dollars, you can't use, you can't apply for the same thing over and over again. So Carol's department's working hard to get us access to every resource within the limits of the stimulus packages that come our way. I would note also that some of the things that you guys had mentioned, and Brett already hit, the district-wide equity training has started. For those, that we did add hours to the contract two years ago, Sharita, a four-hour requirement with additional money. So the board put in three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in order to add contract time for teachers, as well as support staff members, to make sure everybody got this, but they were also paid for that. So that's we're continuing. So that training is kicked off, and we look forward to continuing to grow that way. Definitely wanna celebrate Armando Johnson, and you've probably followed the, the success that he had through multiple, or most, multiple regional college finals, maybe to the final seven. Unfortunately, he was not named Missouri Teacher of the Year, but he had an amazing run and represented SPS incredibly well. And we have other teacher celebrations that were part of Celebrate SPS with the Foundation last week, the Librarian of the Year, Rookie of the Year, that we will plan to bring to you and feel that the board can recognize them appropriately. Since we didn't get to have the big banquet, we were able to do some virtual things with the Foundation support, but we look forward to bringing them in, at least recognize them in front of the board. Let's see, a couple other things. New Green County Assessment Data, we presented to you last, I'm not that they have not finished all of the assessment data. We are having a special board meeting on September seventeenth at noon by Zoom in order to approve those updated numbers. Carol will send you that information as soon as we have it. We got it in today, so we think what that number is, and that, we know what that number is. It's gonna improve the tacklers, I believe it should be appropriately set. Just took them a little more time than we had hoped. In addition, new Jarrett Middle School. We talked about some bond projects. Bid opening is Thursday, September tenth. So at our next meeting, we look forward to hopefully having a contract for you to review contractors that we picked up. So we're hoping for very competitive bids again, like we've had at the last few opportunities. And I'll just mention this for the foundation. Tomorrow, I do believe, is Gallants for Growth, which is a partnership with Come and Go. So you may see that on social media, so if your tanks aren't full. Stop and fuel up tomorrow. Those sessions will stay directly into our classrooms and support our students. Those are the system updates. I have a few legislative things, but I'll stop on the system updates and see if there's any questions. system updates and see if there's any questions. Nothing else, I'll keep rolling. So, legislative is pretty small, there are talks of additional, up and down, new Senate package was kind of tossed out today, I think. I haven't studied it enough to know education's impact at this point, but be prepared for us to engage in additional conversations. One of the things that has been, I think, overall positive, if you've seen play out in the last few, also against Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos for the implementation of the first stimulus package dollars that were pushing more resources than we believe as designed to private schools and not using the title formulas the appropriate way, have been basically those lawsuits positioned that the secretary may have pushed her bounds and the allocation in the process that she's used. None of those suits have involved Missouri yet, but we're hoping that they set a precedent and maybe that some of the guidance they'll be able to back off of and change the redirection of some of those dollars.
If I didn't involve Missouri yet, does that mean?
Missouri didn't file any of the suits.
That's, okay, so it's not that we're pending an outcome, it's that we didn't.
So, our department chose a different strategy on the allocation process, and that was to use their 10% over, or their 10% set aside to make districts whole, basically, but they also private school allocation at the level of what the secretary asked for. Other states have sued against that, refused to do that, saying that was not the intent of the law, and they have won at that point. So, the question remains of will Missouri redirect? We don't know yet, we're continuing to advocate, that's been our position from day one with the department, so I know MSBA may be engaging on that and other organizations.
That we should file suit?
It's not telling the department to file suit, I'm saying that they shouldn't follow the secretary's direction, and they can do that a number of different ways, right? So, that's been, that is going to be in their favor, so we'll see if they change direction or not.
That was very hard for the Missouri.
Thank you.
But I took the meaning.
You can read between the lines. Special session at the state level is still underway, no significant impact on school operations, U.SBA and others have been keeping us updates, but the scope of the session's been fairly limited, so we're monitoring it to see if it ends up in a place where we need to engage in, that is the legislative update.
All right. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is, got a few notes here, but any individual or comments?
I have, I have an unsolicited comment from a middle school teacher at Pershing yesterday that said he has had zero discipline problem, all the kids are so glad to be back in school that we could ask them to stand on their head, they just are so happy to be back, and the numbers in the classrooms are just so easily, but he said the students are, I tend to say anybody, and I said, I'm sure that will continue, but for the first two weeks, it said it's just an absolute joy to do that. And then, my other comment is that somewhere along the line, I'd like, I saw the GY3 substitute with 20 hours, and I, 20 online hours, and I went to school 1,640 to get my degree if I attended every day, so it's less than that, but I still got it. So, it's just like, I understand the problem, but 20 online hours, and they're going to be in a classroom with all of the issues that we know exist there, doesn't seem like the rights, but I hate to identify problems without solutions, and I know now that retired teachers can, it's more than their 550, so that to me was one, but 20 online hours, just two and a half days? It just, it just seems like, it just seems like to me that was not, say, I understand why, but that just seems so minimal to me, I, so I'd like for us to kind of, are we there?
I think that was a local decision.
No, no, that's a statewide, but we could put those people in the classroom because they're going through with our providers, they're going through the training, the providers going to reimburse them for the cost of the course, so it wasn't our decision, but I understand the problem too.
Isn't it just temporary, though?
Well, it's, yeah, it's through the end of the calendar.
Action.
And I'm kind of hopeful it doesn't get extended again on that, because I think I agree with Bruce, is that circumstances, and maybe it's essential, but we've become reliant on this. And I worry, there's nothing more permanent than a temporary solution, and I do worry that it will sort of get kicked down the road, and I think that would be pretty, so I would be hopeful that we would say enough.
That's something we're going to monitor and get feedback from districts to say, is it working, are these people? I would tell you the intent behind that is, and I would just, is maybe a 60, because the current qualifier is 60 hours, right, and just 60 hours of college credit, I, I'm just as good a qualification as a 40-year-old with a, that has a lot of life experience, has worked with kids, you know, has had kids, and now has a 20-hour, you know, training around what it is actually to be in an education classroom. Those 60 college hours have nothing to do with, have to have nothing, the 20 hours would actually likely be more training towards education than is currently required by the 60 hours, because as Bruce knows, right, I mean, our subs don't have a requirement beyond a 60-hour college, just college credit hour, right? As feedback from districts will know, right, as these people get their license, is this tool working, is it getting more qualified or less qualified people in the classroom and able to give feedback so they can decide whether to make it permanent or not, so.
I mean, the ideal strikes and use both, and rather than either one, but again, once we click.
Thanks.
I just would, I just wanted to, a couple comments. One was, we were all able to, all board members were able to be at the first ribbon cutting at the Ada Philbright, that was exciting, so thank you for there on a hot day, but we had a lot to celebrate. The, I wanted to let the board know, last board meeting, we had a public speaker, it was a parent who was asking a bunch of good questions that she wanted answered, and I'm just letting you know that I had Amin Patton reach out to her from the district office to answer to her and report them, to receive that feedback, so just letting you all know that. And then, if you had the chance to watch the SPS Foundation celebration online, our class teachers of the year, you know, they did a great job in delivering their speeches, and if that didn't happen, and actually had the ribbon cutting, maybe in the future when we actually get to have a big celebration, that we need a teacher of the year victory lap, you know, bring back some of these teachers that we didn't get to fully celebrate in the entirety, so maybe we can do some victory laps, but I'm thankful for the teachers, continue to meet teacher needs, because those are not going anywhere, even during this time. Any other comments? More comments, we have upcoming meetings, you should have received today via email, a meeting request for the BOE special meeting, September 17th at noon via the faculty, the next regular scheduled board meeting is September 22nd, and just a reminder that our 2020 Annual MSBA Conference will be held virtually September 24th through 27th, and as soon as we have information, more information about those session offerings, that's. And it's on the website now? Okay. Thank you, Gary. That leads us to, hearing no more board comments, that leads us to our next agenda item, which is plus delta. Do you have any plus deltas that you want to share? You can write that down in the chat as we conclude our meeting tonight. Next agenda item is to vote to go into executive session, and the recommended action is that the board meet in executive session to discuss legal and personnel matters as presented in section 610.21 subsections 1 of the Statute of Missouri. So, move. Jill? Sharita with a second, any discussions? Hearing none, we can vote. Thank you all.